All right, well, good morning. I will go ahead and call our meeting of the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute Board of Justice to order. Before we begin, I'd like to start with some introductions and welcome our newest member, Judge Hunter Reese from Moore County. Senator Clark, do you want to start?
Sure. I am also a new member. I am outside here this time from the Indiana State. So my name is Brett Clark, and I represent parts of Hendricks County, Hutton County, and I was a former sheriff in Hendricks County.
Sorry about that. We sit on so many boards together, I forget that. Yes, you're a new member as well.
I'm Lori Torres, and I am chief deputy for Attorney General Taboquita, so I am his designated to the board.
Rebecca Humphrey, Youth Services Director of the Tepucan.
Amy Carosse, State Public Defender.
I'm Kyle Pruitt, Chief of Police at the Police Department of Indiana.
Doug Hunsinger with the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute.
Natalie Hufman, I'm the General Counsel at ICJI.
And I'm Darren Gole, Deputy Senior Judge.
Ms. Mchann, I'm Hunter Reese, Circuit Court Judge in Warren County.
Good morning. I'm Chris Naylor, Secretary of Director for the Prosecuting Attorneys Council.
Mark Stewart, Professor at McKinney School of Law.
Chris Blessinger, Deputy Commissioner for the Department of Crime.
Judge Travis?
Good morning. I am Amy Marie Travis. I'm a judge down in Jackson County, Indiana, and happy to be here. Good morning.
Judge Travis, if you're speaking, we are unable to hear you. Oh, we can hear you now.
Okay, sorry. Good morning. I'm Amy Marie Travis. I'm a judge down in Jackson County, Indiana, and I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Well, thank you for joining us. Representative Matt DiMara? Okay, we'll move on. Corey Martin.
Hey, good morning. Corey Martin, Executive Director of the Indiana State Police Alliance.
Great, thank you. Justin?
Morning. Justin Fortner, I'm the Chief Administrative Officer of the Indiana Supreme Court.
Bernice Corley.
Bernice Corley, Executive Director of the Indiana Public Defender Council. Pleasure to be here.
And is Sheriff Ballen on?
I have the 269 number.
No, he would be the 219 number.
It's an honorary number.
Okay, thanks. And just as a reminder, we will do a roll call, a vote for every vote, since we can have online participants. Approval of the meeting minutes. The meeting minutes were distributed in advance of our meeting. Are there any corrections, additions, or clarifications? And if not, may I have a motion to approve the minutes? Move to the brief.
Shelby.
Second. Okay. And Natalie, will you call the roll?
I'm going to keep things interesting because on the list is alphabetical ordered by first name, so people care. You never know when I'm all. All right, Amy Carosse.
Aye. I mean, excuse me.
Judge Travis?
Aye.
Bernice Corley?
Aye.
Chris Naylor?
Yes.
Corey Martin?
Aye.
Judge Dolananti?
Yes.
Judge Reese?
Yes.
Justin Fortner?
Yes.
Chief Pruitt?
Aye.
You threw me off.
I know.
Chris Blessinger?
Yes.
Mark Stewart?
Yes.
Rebecca Humphrey?
Aye.
And Lori Torres. I know. I, uh, aye. Trying to figure out the L coming after the R. It said R.
Okay, well, thank you. The minutes from the June meeting have been approved. I'm going to quickly highlight a couple items in our quarterly division. That was sent around in advance of our meeting, but always happy to answer questions you may have. First, I'd like to welcome Shelby Thomas, who's joined the institute and will serve as our Director of Public Affairs and Substance Use Policy. She comes to us from the Governor's Office, where she and I worked in combating the drug epidemic. I'm also very, very sad to announce that Natalie Hufman, this will be her last meeting. She is going to transition back to her roots and go back to the Indiana Gaming Commission at the end of September. So she's been with us for six years and has been instrumental in a lot of the success that we've had here at the institute. So thank you. And then one other thing that was not included in the report, our justice assistance grants normally open around this time of the year. We have not heard from the Department of Justice as of yet on those grants, and so they will be delayed. Depending upon the timing, we may need to have a special meeting, or we may need to adjust our December meeting, or they may end up getting pushed back in time of quarter. So we will continue to let everyone know as we hear things, but people and your stakeholders know. I know a lot of you, your members rely on those dollars, and so we will get them out as soon as, as soon as we hear something. Any questions? All right, well, we'll move on to our budget update. Cheryl Espina, our Chief Financial Officer is here. Cheryl?
Good morning. The financial report in your packet, it reflects the expenditures, obligations, and balances as of August 31st from U.S. Department of Justice and U.S. Department of Public Services. There are several grants ending this month, and I would like to draw a list of two particular grants, which are the first, what is the fiscal 2021 family prevention, family, the FIBSA ARP. It has about $771,159.74. The reason was now we have a material balance because of COVID. So subsidies had difficulty qualifying for that. And the other one is the fiscal 2022 vocal compensation grant. You have $487,586.81. The dispersed spending expenditures in this grant are driven by the application of received. Do you guys have any questions? Ms. Lamino?
Cheryl, do you want to just briefly touch on the process in which you've put in place to ensure that award balances are being drawn down?
Yes, so, so when we have a material balance in the grant, we try to actually move expenses from the new grant. When they argue between the performance criteria of the grant's closing, we try to move them. And then, because all of them actually have the same objectives, but we just have different performance criteria.
Questions for Cheryl?
Thank you.
Before we move to the youth funding recommendations, I just want to provide a quick update on the youth division, and specifically the dollars from the General Assembly. This is a program in which we work with the Youth Justice Oversight Committee and the Office of Court Services on. So we're going to be pausing the further release of any RFPs through the end of the year. And during this pause, the YJOC is going to be modifying their funding formula and reviewing the requirements for their funding. And on our side, ICJI will create a pilot program that will not only revamp, but also completely overhaul our application and reporting requirements. So this should help provide relief from the administrative burden associated with applying and complying with our standards. And this really comes down to, two years ago, the General Assembly allocated $60 million for youth in the juvenile justice system, and approximately $41 million of that remains unallocated. So it is clear there are barriers on multiple fronts in accessing these dollars. We're working to additionally come up with successful programs that other communities have implemented that are maybe easier to pull out of the box than some others. And so I'm trying to make it as easy for our grantees to access these dollars. Our goal will be at the beginning of the year to release an initial RFP with, depending on how that goes, probably in June, we'll release a second round of funding. And our goal would be to have all of that drawn down in that second round, and we'd be ready to ask the legislature for more funding for this settlement. So that's our hope.
One question. So is the, are the funds not reverting?
No, they are reverting. So they have already, they've already rolled over once. Chairman Fortner?
I feel like chairman is a promotion, but okay, I'll go with it. Thank you, Director Hunsinger, for the intro on that, because what you will hear as we go through these grants, in the past when we've done these, there have been some that have been deferred, knowing that there was going to be another round of grants coming up soon. But because of the work that ICJI is going to do, you're not going to hear deferrals in these batches of grants. There are some that are denied that we expect folks will reapply, but it'll just be a longer time. So it was just deny versus defer this time around. And again, I mention this each time, the juvenile diversion, juvenile alternative programs are subject to a pretty strict formula that ICJI is going to look at. The behavioral health grants have no funding formula, and then the diversion and alternatives also have a planning option. It's a $20,000 cap on those planning grants. So there are five total batches of grants to go through. But to start off, I'll lead with the minutes of our subcommittee meeting. We met on August 26th. Those minutes should be in your packet. And Director Hunsinger, I would move to approve those minutes.
Give a second? Second. Okay. Call the roll?
Amy Carosse?
Aye.
Judge Travis?
Yes.
Bernice Corley?
I think that was.
Yeah.
Both will record.
Thank you. Chris Naylor?
Yes.
Corey Martin?
Aye.
Judge Dolananti?
Yes.
Judge Reese?
Yes.
Justin Fortner?
Yes.
Chief Pruitt?
Aye.
Chris Blessinger?
Yes.
Mark Stewart?
Aye.
Rebecca Humphrey?
Aye.
Lori Torres?
Aye.
All right, that's been approved.
What is the list? Did I say? You said not.
We're not hearing, trying to remember. But thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and take these. I'm not sure what order they're in in your binder, but I'm going to take them in the order they're listed on the agenda. So the first would be the Behavioral Health Grant. We had six applications for this one, total of 4.3 million, actually, I think it's, sorry, seven applications. Three recommended full funding, one I have at less than full funding, and then I have three that are not recommended for any funding. The three that are recommended for full funding, that's LifeSpring Health Systems, Perry Community School Corporation, and Ripley County Court Services. Director Hunsinger, last time we did the entire grant as one batch, full, partial, and then less than, do you want to do that this way again?
Yes, we can, we can, we can do all of them together as a, as accepting the recommendations as a subcommittee.
Okay. So the recommended for less than full funding is the George Junior Republic in Indiana. That was reduced due to some excessive administrative expenses, and then they had also requested rent and some administrative costs that weren't allowed under the grant program, so it was reduced. And then the ones that are not recommended for full funding, there are two from Rise Above Academy. You'll see them again later on, one that's also recommended for no funding. The grant wasn't appropriate. They weren't detailing behavioral health programming. The application was clearly written by AI. It just wasn't fully fleshed out at all. So that one was recommended for no funding, both of those. And then the last one there, the Children and Family Services Corporation, says Davis and Knox County. This one had been pushed back before, looking for collaboration plans between those two counties, and they didn't offer collaboration plans from both of them. And there is no immediate upcoming round, as I mentioned, in order to push this one back and do it again. So we are recommending this one be denied. The ICJI staff will continue to work with them while they develop their collaboration plans. So those are the seven grant applications for the Behavioral Health Grant. And to open the bidding, I would move, we approve those recommendations from the subcommittee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll?
Amy Carosse?
Aye.
Judge Travis?
Aye.
Bernice Corley?
Aye.
Chris Naylor?
Yes.
Corey Martin? Do we have you, Corey?
Aye.
Thank you. Judge Dolananti?
Yes.
Judge Reese?
Yes.
Justin Fortner?
Yes.
Chief Pruitt?
Aye.
Chris Blessinger?
Yes.
Mark Stewart?
Aye.
Rebecca Humphrey?
Aye.
And Lori Torres?
Yes.
Grant recommendation has been approved.
Thank you. So the next would be the Juvenile Community Alternatives Planning Grant. We had one application for this. That was St. Joseph County Probate Court Juvenile Justice Center. This is an existing program that trains community volunteers. It's successful. It's already established. So we are recommending their full funding amount at $19,950, and I would move to approve that recommendation.
I think for the sake of time, why don't you go through the rest of the recommendations?
All of the youth justice?
Yes.
Awesome. I'm in. Okay, the next one then is the Juvenile Community Alternatives Grant. We had three applications on that, two that are being recommended for full funding. That is Indiana Youth Services Association and the Jennings County Probation Department. And then one at partial funding. And I will note, the Jennings County one, they are seeking funding in order to pay a commissioner or county referee, so you're going to see another grant from them. This one would cover about half of the cost. You're going to see another one from them later that covers the rest of it. The not recommended for funding, the Boys and Girls Club of Indianapolis. They had a prior grant, and they were seeking the remainder of Marion County's pot, but there was another Marion County applicant that just had a better application, and there wasn't enough in the pot to really serve what the Boys and Girls Club wanted to do. So those are the Juvenile Community Alternatives Grants. The Juvenile Diversion Planning Grant, we had one application. It's listed at full funding. They requested $16,000, but their budget clearly demonstrated $20,000, so the recommendation is to fund them at $20,000 and make sure they actually update. The narrative showed $20,000 worth of services in need, and so the funding recommendation is to fund them at $20,000 fully. And then the final batch of grants is the Juvenile Diversion Grants. Six applications on this batch requesting about $1.5 billion, and the recommendation is to fund about $1 million, three of them at full funding. The last one on the bottom, you'll see the other half of the Jennings County Commissioner/Referee funding, splitting that cost between two grants. The less than requested funding amount is Indiana Youth Services Association, and they're recommending less than full funding simply because they've hit the county caps for the two counties they're serving, Crawford and Marion. And then the ones recommended for no funding, again, are Rise Above Academy. Two grants, the same issues as they had in the other grants. The applications were clearly written by AI. They weren't diversion focused. They were just not good applications. So that said, those are all of the recommendations. And Director Hunsinger, I would move the board to approve them.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
I don't know if it's because he's on the, or whatever. I just think it would be very helpful to have the lists that the subcommittee have, like, just tucked into the packet. So I actually don't have any idea who these different organizations are that are getting funded, getting less than funded, getting, even though I'm very confident in the subcommittee's recommendation, it'd be nice to have the list of the names.
Are they not?
Are they in here?
They are.
Farther back?
Subcommittee report, and it should be, next to.
Well, so.
And then you're.
I'm watching the lights.
And then you're going to give your magnifying glasses.
Yes. I'm okay with that. Yeah, okay.
Senator Clark?
It seems that there's a theme here of, we have 92 counties, I assume, that are eligible, and one applies, three applies. What are we missing? Are we not getting the word out? Is the barrier too high? I'm not trying to increase justice. But why are we seeing more folks jumping into the pool here?
Yeah, we, we've looked into this as part of why we're, and it is, it is one of the reasons why we're sort of resetting this. One, there are some caps to what people can, can receive in these dollars. We think that, in some ways, is a barrier, especially for larger communities. The caps just aren't enough funding for them to incentivize them to apply for it. In other things that we've heard and feedback that we've asked, grantees have applied, it has been CJI's compliance standards or our application process. The other part of this is the challenge that we have with a lot of grants. I think if you look at sort of any agency, I know we've experienced this on the opioid settlement side, there are communities that come together and do a really great job, no matter what the topic is, whether it's economic development or mental health. They bring the stakeholders together, and they're able to, to create great programs. I mean, you see it in, you know, New, then there are those communities that we're just going to struggle no matter what we're doing. And that is, we've had a number of communities or a number of counties who have accepted these dollars. They've figured out how to grade these dollars into the programs that they're already running. And I think the other, the other challenge we have really comes around cooperation in a lot of these communities. Thank you. Justin, did you have anything you want to add?
Senator Clark, it's a good question, and it's one that, you know, as Doug mentioned, we've tried to dig into here at our agency. And there's just, it's the same thing. There are some counties and some courts that are just much more sophisticated, much better at going for grants and putting them together. We do a lot of outreach from our Office of Court Services to try and make sure folks know. The other thing that we've run into on these is because there are county caps, the organization in the county that's better at it jumps on it, and it might take another smaller entity a little bit of time to get a grant together. But by then, you know, you heard it here, some of the money's already gone, so there's just not an availability for it. So it's just the structure of the grant is challenging, but the staff at ICJI and our office are really, really active in trying to make sure folks get as much help as they can.
We could get questions from legislators on the Jennings County application. So I just wanted to find out, as ICJI commonly funded the referee commissioner positions, number one, and number two, the reference to JDI, it's my understanding that the JDI program comes with funding for local communities. So we could get questions from legislators, so I just.
You're sure you will. You're right.
Yeah. So these grants are first reviewed by a committee that involves not just other state agencies, but also the courts. And so the courts have reviewed this one specifically because of the referee issue, or shifting the magistrate to a referee. I think that's what we're doing. And so they are, they have said this is okay in this specific instance.
And I shut that down. It was originally framed as a magistrate, and that was, that was not going to fly because that was essentially creating a state judicial officer by grant. This is a county position, a local position, which is just a different structure. And yes, it's state funding from one pot into, into a different pot, but the way they laid it out, we were okay with. But it was definitely something we had to look at really hard to make sure that was okay.
And it would be subject to renewal, right? So if it didn't, if the funding ran out, then that position goes away. If they wanted to make it permanent, like turn a referee into a magistrate, they would have to come before the General Assembly create that, because we had some of those, as you know, judiciary this last session.
That's absolutely correct. Absolutely.
Has ICJI funded one of these positions before? Do you know?
No, we have, to our position, to our knowledge, we, this grant program has not funded any positions like that before.
And I can say JDI funds have not funded a position like this, or referee.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yes.
The Rise Above Academy in Elkhurst County was not recommended for funding, so what was the, was it out of money? Or sometimes there's a note coming there, but I don't see it.
Ellen, do you want to talk about Rise Above?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, go ahead, if you've got the lane under your staff.
Their application was mentioned, it was written by AI.
That was the one. I heard that.
That was the one, I heard that at some point.
I'll just give an example, um, like where it says, uh, AI leaves inter data here, there was no data entered.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, call roll.
Amy Carosus?
Aye.
Judge Travis?
Aye.
Bernice Corley?
Aye.
Chris Naylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Corey Martin?
Aye.
Judge Dolanity?
Yes.
Judge Reese?
Yes.
Justin Fortner?
Yes.
Chief Pruitt?
Aye.
Chris Blessinger?
Yes.
Mark Stewart?
Aye.
Rebecca Humphrey?
Aye.
Lori Torres?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Those youth funding recommendations have all been approved. Uh, moving on now to the victim services funding recommendations and Chair of the Subcommittee, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Executive Director. Um, the Subcommittee met on August 27th, minutes of the meeting are the materials that are called behind the sandy colored page, I suppose, for lack of a better label to put on it. And we considered two, uh, funding streams that we'll, we'll go through, and as was done with, uh, the prior Subcommittee will, we can take them as a, as a group, but I'm gonna need to make some notes about a few of those. One was FIBSA, the Family Violence Prevention Services Act, uh, 2025 cycle. The other is known by the acronym STOP, Services Training Officers and Prosecutors, uh, reflected in minutes, Subcommittee's prepared to make recommendations to the Board. And I would move that the minutes of the August 27th, 2025 meeting of Victim Services Subcommittee be approved as printed out.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Some ready to.
All right, uh, discussion? Call roll.
Amy Carosus?
Aye.
Judge Travis?
Do we get a second?
You, you wrote a second?
Yeah, right. Bernice Corley?
Aye.
Chris Naylor?
Yes.
Corey Martin?
Aye.
Judge Dolanity?
Yes.
Judge Reese?
Yes.
Justin Fortner?
Yes.
Chief Pruitt?
Aye.
Chris Blessinger?
Yes.
Mark Stewart?
Aye.
Rebecca Humphrey?
Aye.
Lori Torres?
Aye.
And so the first, um, set of grant applications and recommendations to the Board will be in, in the STOP 2025 cycle. There were, and that's the first spreadsheet, uh, behind the Subcommittee's, um, meeting, and it's 54 applications submitted for the 2025 grant cycle. Just over $3.6 million available, a little over $4.6 million was requested. And now this program is designed to help courts, prosecutors, police and victim services providers to develop or strengthen, and or strengthen, um, response to victim, uh, domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault and stalking. If you look at the final page of the spreadsheet, you'll see the actual numbers, but I'll run through them in this sense. The STOP grant cycle, as somebody may recall, uh, requires certain percentages allocated to various categories of potential recipients of these grants. For example, 5% goes to courts, 25% to prosecutor, or to law enforcement, 25% prosecution, 30% victim services, um, and 15% of the funds are discretionary. Additionally, 20% overall, uh, the funds must meaningfully address sexual assault. And as we've done in the past and as indicated by, look at the spreadsheet, what I, what I was going to say is at the end of the spreadsheet, you'll see the percentages required for those various categories. And you will, I will point out the one for, um, law enforcement, where it is supposed to be, uh, 25%, uh, uh, the, I'm sorry, yeah, 25%. Is that 15%? And so accordingly, about $200,000 has been held back, if you will, in reserve, to see if we can't get that percentage of 15 up closer to the, to the 25. So the three categories by overview in general, we've got seven programs that the Subcommittee's recommending to the Board. Receive the amounts they requested, and those dollar amounts are listed specifically on the spreadsheet. There are 30 programs that the recommendation from the Subcommittee is that they receive some funding, but in amounts less than they requested. And, and this is largely a function of the amount of money available to, to award. And then there are three programs not recommended to receive funding. Two of those recommendations were no funding, were due to the program activities containing items that were unlawful in this stream or this, uh, yeah, in this grant, beyond the scope of, um, uh, I'm sorry, I, I got my numbers mixed up, I apologize. Sorry. That was FIBSA, we backtracked, I apologize. 54 applications, the first spreadsheet, part of the spreadsheet, there are 10 programs recommended for funding in the amounts they requested, in my apologies. 39 programs recommended for funding, but in amounts less than they requested, but again, those lower amounts are based on the funds available. And there are five programs not recommended for requested funding, again, largely if not entirely due to the amount of funding available. And as I mentioned about, or not about, but, about $200,000 held in reserve to see if we can increase that law enforcement percentage. And with that, I would move that the Board adopt the Subcommittee's recommendations as to those three categories in the STOP 2025, uh, grant cycle, for those receiving awards in the amounts specifically listed on the, uh, various pages of the spreadsheet.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Call roll.
Amy Carosus?
Aye.
Judge Travis?
Aye.
Bernice Corley?
Aye.
Chris Naylor?
Yes.
Corey Martin?
Aye.
Judge Dolanity?
Yes.
Judge Reese?
Yes.
Justin Fortner?
Yes.
Chief Pruitt?
Aye.
Chris Blessinger?
Yes.
Mark Stewart?
Aye.
Rebecca Humphrey?
Aye.
Lori Torres?
Aye.
So the, uh, second grant, or the FIBSA, Family Violence Prevention Services, again, the 2025, uh, cycle, uh, 40 applications submitted, a little over 2.7 million was available, but a little over 4.1 million was requested. These funds, uh, for programs, projects, to prevent, uh, incident of, uh, you know, insert families, uh, family, victims of family violence, domestic violence, dating violence and their dependents through immediate shelter, supportive services and or access to community-based programs. Now this grant program requires that 70% of the awarded funds go to programs that have a shelter in, as part of their program. And 25% go to programs that do not provide or do not have a shelter, non-shelter programs. And if you look at the spreadsheet, you'll see toward the left-hand side, it's indicated by an S or NS for shelter or non-shelter. The other part I would mention about this is the Victim Services Division staff met with the Indiana Coalition Against Domestic Violence, uh, to discuss funding for this grant cycle. And all the recommendations presented to the Subcommittee and then in turn, uh, to the Board were presented and agreed upon by the, uh, ICADV as a result of staff interaction with them. So of the 40, again, broken down into three categories, there are seven programs, uh, the first, listed first in the spreadsheet, that are recommended to receive awards in the amount requested. 30 programs recommended for less than the amounts requested, again, as mentioned previously, largely due to the, uh, the funds available. And three programs that were not recommended for requested funding, these, I misspoke earlier, two because the program activities contain items unlawful or outside of scope of the 2025 subfunding. And one was due to basically insufficient funds to make it award. So with that, I would move that the Board adopt the Subcommittee's recommendations as to all three of those categories for all 40 applicants. And that those receiving awards, if they receive awards in the amounts, specific dollar amounts indicated in the spreadsheet.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion?
I had a question, just, I probably just missed it. So, um, you marked at the end where it's the amounts available, requested and awarded, what were the three categories there?
The three categories for FIBSA?
Um, yeah, you got three different, um, it separated into three amount requested and not-
Sorry, I flipped on it.
I'm taking eight.
Yeah, the staff, could you-
Yeah, so the first line is the total amount. Oh, the second line is shelter, the third line is non-shelter.
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Any, uh, further discussion? Okay, uh, call roll.
Amy Carosus?
Aye.
Judge Travis? Judge Travis?
Aye, I'm here. I don't know if I'm not turned on on your end.
You're good now. Bernice Corley?
Aye.
Chris Naylor?
Yes.
Corey Martin?
Aye.
Judge Dolanity?
Yes.
Judge Reese?
Yes.
Justin Fortner?
Yes.
Chief Pruitt?
Aye.
Chris Blessinger?
Yes.
Mark Stewart?
Aye.
Rebecca Humphrey?
Aye.
Lori Torres?
Aye.
Well, thank you. Uh, victim services funding recommendations have all been approved. Next, we will turn to Judge Travis and the exoneration.
Thank you, Director. Um, we, the first thing is our memorandum of, uh, our approval of our meeting memorandum. Uh, we met on the 11th of August at noon time, it was a hybrid meeting, and it should be included in your packets. And so for the sake of opening the matter for discussion, I would move that we approve the, uh, meeting memorandum.
Second. We have a second. Uh, any discussion? Call roll.
Amy Carosus?
Aye.
Judge Travis?
Aye.
Bernice Corley?
Aye.
Chris Naylor?
Yes.
Corey Martin?
Aye.
Judge Dolanity?
Yes.
Judge Reese?
Yes.
Justin Fortner?
Yes.
Chief Pruitt?
Aye.
Chris Blessinger?
Yes.
Mark Stewart?
Aye.
Rebecca Humphrey?
Aye.
Lori Torres?
Aye.
Uh, Judge Travis?
And then as a point of order, Director, do you want me to address all four of these at once, uh, as they're all denials, or do you want me to address them individually?
Uh, counsel is saying we should do them individually.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to double check since we've kind of changed the way we do things. Okay, so the first one is, um, Heidi D. Brown. The recommendation of the committee was to deny her application because, uh, Brown's convictions were not vacated, reversed or set aside. She did not meet the statutory criteria for compensation from the fund as set out by Indiana Code 5-2-23-1. In addition, she did not meet the definition of actually innocent under, um, the same code section but ending in two. And, um, furthermore, the time she spent incarcerated for her conviction, uh, that was vacated, um, excuse me, was not for a conviction that was vacated. And then finally, also, this application technically was not timely either. So those were the reasons for the denial. For the purposes of opening this matter for discussion, uh, I would move that we follow the recommendations, uh, for denial.
Second, it's Bernice.
Okay, we have a second from Bernice. Uh, any discussion? Call roll.
Amy Carosus?
Aye.
Judge Travis?
Aye.
Bernice Corley?
Aye.
Chris Naylor?
Yes.
Corey Martin?
Aye.
Judge Dolanity?
Yes.
Judge Reese?
Yes.
Justin Fortner?
Yes.
Chief Pruitt?
Aye.
Chris Blessinger?
Yes.
Mark Stewart?
Aye.
Rebecca Humphrey?
Aye.
Lori Torres?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Judge Travis?
Okay, thank you, sir. And then with regard to Derek L. Boyd, um, we also recommended and voted to deny his application. He initially was sentenced to home detention. He only ended up serving Department of Correction time because he violated the terms of home detention and then subsequent work release. Uh, he also pleaded guilty to these charges. His convictions were not vacated because of actual innocence, but because of a Boykin violation. Um, and his case was then ultimately dismissed due to a lack of available evidence. So, uh, we did not think that he also, uh, didn't, didn't meet the definition of actually innocent as set forth in Indiana Code 5-2-23-2. So for the purposes of opening this matter for discussion, uh, I would move that, um, the, uh, Board vote to deny Derek L. Boyd's application.
Second, it's Bernice.
Second from Bernice. Uh, any discussion? Call roll.
Amy Carosus?
Aye.
Judge Travis?
Aye.
Bernice Corley?
Aye.
Chris Naylor?
Yes.
Corey Martin?
Aye.
Judge Dolanity?
Yes.
Judge Reese?
Yes.
Justin Fortner?
Yes.
Chief Pruitt?
Aye.
Chris Blessinger?
Yes.
Mark Stewart?
Aye.
Rebecca Humphrey?
Aye.
Lori Torres?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Motion prevails, uh, Judge Travis?
Okay, and then regarding Brandon T. Rosser, uh, again, our recommendation was to deny. The reason for that was he was not convicted of either of the offenses for which he applied, um, so he did not actually meet the, um, requirements for compensation under Indiana Code 5-2-23-1. In addition, the time that he did spend incarcerated was not for a conviction that was vacated as required by subsection three. And also, pre-trial detention does not qualify for compensation under subsection three B. And then furthermore, his application also was not timely. So for those reasons, we did recommend denial of his application. So for the purposes of opening this, uh, motion, this for discussion, I would move that we, uh, vote to deny the application of Brandon T. Rosser for exoneration funds.
Second, Bernice.
Okay, we have, um, a motion and a second, uh, discussion? Call roll.
Amy Carosus?
Aye.
Judge Travis?
Aye.
Bernice Corley?
Aye.
Chris Naylor?
Yes.
Corey Martin?
Aye.
Judge Dolanity?
Yes.
Judge Reese?
Yes.
Justin Fortner?
Yes.
Chief Pruitt?
Aye.
Chris Blessinger?
Yes.
Mark Stewart?
Aye.
Rebecca Humphrey?
Aye.
Lori Torres?
Aye.
Thank you, uh, motion prevails, uh, Judge Travis?
Okay, thank you so much, Director. Um, regarding Naya K. Trotter, uh, we also voted to deny that application. The application indicated that she served, uh, two days, uh, related to this case and in, indicated that it was, uh, pre-trial. And so again, she was not convicted of the, uh, offense, she did not meet the definite, uh, the, um, statutory criteria under Indiana Code 5-2-23-1. And, um, it, pre-trial, again, as I've mentioned, pre-trial detention doesn't count under section three B. So for those reasons, uh, we voted to deny this application for compensation under the fund. And so I would move that the Board vote to deny Naya K. Trotter's application for exoneration funds.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Amy Carosus?
Aye.
Judge Travis?
Aye.
Bernice Corley?
Aye.
Aye.
Chris Naylor?
Yes.
Corey Martin?
Aye.
Aye.
Judge Dolanity?
Yes.
Judge Reese?
Yes.
Justin Fortner? Justin, are you there?
Yes.
Thank you. Chief Pruitt?
Aye.
Chris Blessinger?
Yes.
Mark Stewart?
Aye.
Rebecca Humphrey?
Aye.
Lori Torres?
Aye.
Okay, uh, motion prevails and, uh, all four of our, uh, exoneration applications have been denied. Uh, thank you to that committee, I know a considerable amount of work goes into reviewing those applications, uh, and, um, now I'll entertain for preparing those. In our final order of business, uh, this Board, uh, has an appointment to the Commission on Court Appointed Attorneys. Uh, previously, Bernice Corley, uh, from the public defenders council, uh, had been our appointee to the commission. Uh, however, legislative changes in the last session, uh, have left Director Corley no longer eligible, uh, to serve in, um, that role. Uh, so the CCAA has recommended Paige Belts, uh, from the Indiana Bar Association. Um, I've met with Paige to discuss the appointment, I've also, um, discussed with a number of members, uh, the recommendation. And, uh, there seems to be a consensus that she would make a, uh, good appointment. And with that, um, I would entertain a motion. Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Uh, any discussion? Call roll.
Amy Carosus?
Aye.
Judge Travis?
Aye.
Bernice Corley?
Aye.
Chris Naylor?
Yes.
Corey Martin?
Aye.
Judge Dolanity?
Yes.
Judge Reese?
Yes.
Justin Fortner?
Yes.
Chief Pruitt?
Aye.
Chris Blessinger?
Yes.
Mark Stewart?
Aye.
Rebecca Humphrey?
Aye.
Lori Torres?
Aye.
Good, well, thank you. Uh, motion prevails, I know it's a little odd that a Board appoints someone to another Board, but, but it's, that is the statute. Finally, uh, I wanted to announce, uh, that we will be creating a, uh, traffic safety committee as a, or a Subcommittee, uh, traffic safety, uh, for this Board. So if anyone's interested in, uh, joining that, um, to, uh, assist our traffic safety division, uh, please let me know, uh, and we'll make those appointments. Uh, and if there is no further, uh, business to come before the Board, our next meeting is December 5th at 11:00 AM here in this room. Uh, thank you for your time and attention today, we stand adjourned.